... providing better hearing and quality of life since 1978. www.donotshout.com.
The PM interview with Kristen Hollitt, you know, let the Chair of Ways and Means begin that?
Yes, I will. Okay. Kristen, this is Gail Feckley.
I do.
And we are, hello. We are interviewing you tonight virtually as opposed to you being in person, obviously, before the Council. We do this so that the Council and the public, and if there are any publics that are here with us tonight, get to know you. I know the Council knows you very well. However, this is a different position than you had occupied previously. And it's also a very long, you know, confirmation. It's a six-year. So, we just wanted to make sure that we were doing due diligence.
Absolutely.
And so what I'd like you to do, Kristen, yep, and we welcome you to our virtual meeting. And what I'd like you to do is, we all have your resume, but what I'd like you to do is just kind of give you, give us a little bit of your background and how you think you could benefit the License Commission.
Okay, so, I guess for the past almost twenty years, I moved back to Leominster almost twenty years ago, I've been very involved in the community in a variety of ways. And I apologize, my other part of my resume is brief and consolidated because I hadn't updated it, to be quite honest. And I was doing it, trying to get something to you with the working remotely constraint. Everything takes more time, so I apologize for that.
I'm sure everybody understands.
Yeah, and, you know, it was interesting when I, I've gone to several of the meetings and I've talked to the other members, so I learned about this position. You know, my background is more finance. I'm very good with numbers. I was never on any of the policy committees with the school committee, although I did do some of that work. So, it is a little bit different in that sense. But I think my commitment to the community is, I'd say, pretty obvious. I think the one thing I learned going to the meetings is, you know, you're really just following the rules that have already been set up by, you know, you and people before you and just making sure that people are doing the right thing. And I think that that's, you know, really along my lines.
Yeah, yeah, well, on your resume, you've worked in the law office for quite a few years, I noticed. And, you know, I have personal experience of working in a law office and I know how, you know, you really have to be on top of things and everything has to be exact. So, I appreciated that.
And when you work with the EPA and the, when you work with the EPA with regulation stuff, which my husband's company, it's the same, just in a different manner. You know, you just, there's just following all the guidelines is what you have to do. And just follow the rules that are set before you.
That's right.
So, I started working with both of these companies. I took about a year off when my youngest was born. I was a software recruiter before that for years and years and years. And the commute got to be too much, more than anything. You know, three little kids, it was hard to get back and forth from Burlington or Framingham or wherever my clients were. So, I started working with both of these businesses that way. And both positions evolved as I got, you know, more time and got more comfortable with what I was doing.
Yep, yeah, and, you know, we don't know what's coming our way, you know, what's coming ahead as far as when things start to, you know, reopen and, you know, what's going to be happening with some of these restaurants and things that, you know, have liquor licenses and, you know, various different licensing in the city. So, someone that is, you know, used to being exacting and knows some of the rules and regulations, obviously, would be very helpful on the commission, so.
Oh, yes. This is terrible, but helping me, you know, she is a very organized person and has her binder of things ready to go, so I really appreciate that. I really appreciate that because there's a lot of different rules and regulations and some are used more than others, you know, some are the ones you're referred to more frequently.
Yeah, depending on the situation, I'm sure.
Exactly.
Okay, Kristen, thank you very much. I'm going to...
Counselor Feckley, before you check with your, before you check with your clerk, I think your other member might be with us now, so I just wanted to check if Counselor Dombrowski's on the call?
I am.
Okay, good. So, your whole committee is here. I'll let you proceed with your inquiry of Counselor Frida.
Thank you. Counselor Frida, do you have any questions or comments for Ms. Howlett?
I do. Kristen, obviously, we've known each other for a long time. And I do know your capabilities on the school committee. We've talked quite often about a number of different issues. The License Commission is different, though. I know, you know, we talk about rules and regulations, but it's a different animal. And you feel that you're going to have the strength to really go after somebody that might be continually violating the rules?
Yeah, absolutely. And I did, by going to the meeting, you know, before they were shut down, I did learn a lot. I learned a lot that very first meeting, to be honest. I do know it is a different skill set. You're absolutely right. And I do think I have that skill set, too. You know, I honestly think if you could live through what we all lived through, that, you know, a few years ago in the school committee, I can do anything. But you're, but you're absolutely right. It is a different skill set and it is, you know, making other hard decisions.
I don't disagree. And it's, and you're right, there was a lot going through at the school committee. And my, my comment was not, hopefully, didn't come across as insulting. My whole, my question was, I think you're a very, a very nice, even-heeled person and sometimes you're going to probably have to just put your foot to the flame and say, "Hey, you guys can't do this." And we don't have a whole lot of violations, but, and, you know, you did work with Lynn Godet, so, you know, on the school committee. So, that's a little bit of a good point as well. You know how she did things and how you can do things.
Oh, yeah, no, and she's very organized and she follows the rule. I mean, she definitely, I have big shoes to fill for sure in that aspect. But the one thing I liked about it, when I, you know, went to these meetings and realized what I'd be doing, you do have very clear guidelines to fall back on. You know, there's probably some room for interpretation in there a little bit, but in general, the laws are written for you and you're just referring to what's written. And that is different from what I did before because a lot of that was, you know, more decision-making, what do we think? Much more touchy-feely stuff than following these guidelines. And I have two other members of the committee to rely on as well, who I think made fabulous decisions when I was sitting there.
I was just going to say that, you know, Kenny and Jim have been around a long time and they do a great job. We've had a really good License Committee, I have to say. And it manifests itself in the fact that Leominster has had very few major issues, you know, with a lot of the things that other communities have to put up with. So, you know, that's an important piece. And the youth allies are going to be another. That was one of, you know, Lynn and I went back and forth on that because a lot of them are on Route 12 and they're just one after another after another and some of them violating those rules. And you're going to go out and count the guys that are, that are there and what they're permitted for, you know? But that's, that's a most comical situation at some point, but...
Yes, I just did see, that came up also. That was on the agenda for the meetings I went to. And they gave me some guidance about, about what's, you know, coming up and how they handle it. And honestly, I looked into this commission before I decided I wanted to do it because I don't want to do something and not be successful because it is a six-year term, you know, it is a much longer term. And I feel very comfortable knowing that there are two experienced members who, you know, have a good track record with everything that I've been able to read up on and check out. And that made the decision easier for me, for sure.
Ladies, if you could hold, if you could hold those thoughts. I'm going to open the meeting officially now. If you would all join, stand and salute the flag. A pledge of allegiance.
Unmuted.
States of America, under guard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll take a roll call of the members present. Counselor Frida?
Present.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Present.
Counselor Feckley?
Present.
Counselor Angelini?
Present.
Counselor Arndinger?
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Present.
Counselor David Cormier?
Present.
I shall be recorded as present. All nine members of the Council are present. Does the Chair of Records have a report?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the City Council meeting of March 23rd and just a couple of very, very small edits I already sent to the City Clerk that don't, that don't have anything to do with the outcome of anything. So, I know she's going to be taking care of that. So, with that said, I ask that they be placed on file.
Very well. I'll entertain a motion to go into recess.
For recess?
Could whoever moved, please list their name.
Yep, Claire, I just motioned to move.
And who seconded, please? Did someone second?
I'll second it, Pauline Cormier.
All right, so, moved by Counselor Frida, seconded by Counselor Pauline Cormier. Unfortunately, I have to do these all by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay, we are in recess. Okay, Counselor Feckley, you can pick up that interview.
Okay, Counselor Frida, are you all set or you still have some questions for Kristen?
No, I'm all set with the questions. I just wanted to push Kristen well and I know you, you do have two highly qualified and experienced people sitting there and will work with you. And you know Lynn Godet well enough that you can always tap her resources well. So, thank you for offering.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Dombrowski, do you have any questions or comments for Ms. Howlett?
I don't have any questions. I think Kristen's going to be a strong addition to that commission. I just want to thank her for volunteering and for taking on this commitment.
Very good. Any other counselors have any questions or comments for Ms. Howlett? All set?
Okay, I guess we can move on to the 6:51 interview. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you, Kristen.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, we have actually two interviews for the Conservation Commission. So, do I have them both on the line, Jeffrey Goyn and Nathan Fontaine?
Yes, you do.
And Nathan.
Okay, so I have Jeffrey. You say yes?
Yes.
Okay, and Nathan, you're here, okay. If anybody has any objection, I probably could interview, we could probably interview them together, ask, you know, different questions to each one, but they're both listening, so we might as well. If we were in council chambers, I probably would want to invite them, you know, to the table together.
I think that's a good plan. Why don't we proceed like that?
Okay, all right, so, Jeffrey Goyn and Nathan Fontaine, you have been asked, the council has been asked by the mayor to appoint you to the Conservation Commission with terms to expire April 15th, 2023. Nathan, I know that we're familiar with you. You've been before us before. You're on the OEM, right, on the divers unit of the OEM?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yep, Jeffrey, you're, I think you're new to us, so we'll want to get to know you a little bit better. I don't have either of your resumes, but that's fine. What I'm going to do is start with Jeffrey. And Jeffrey, can you give the Council and any public that may be listening a little idea of your background and how you feel as though you could benefit the Conservation Commission?
Well, I've been working for twelve years now with the Department of Transportation in their project development group. And my job is to review upcoming plans for any kind of drainage design, site work, and varying construction techniques. And so I feel that my experience with them reviewing plans and reviewing documents, the special provisions and local regulations and all that kind of stuff that comes with reviewing those projects can really lend a hand to the Conservation Commission.
Mm-hmm, so, can you go, tell us again a little bit, what kind of projects? Can you give us a couple of examples of what kind of projects you work on?
Oh, well, I mean, speaking of project development, anything that's in design, the Twin City Rail Trail, that's come across my desk. I reviewed that. Leominster Route 12, both Central Street and North Main Street up by where the Shaw's Plaza, used to be Shaw's anyway, is. Just to, just to name a couple of projects.
Okay, now, is this something that was part of your education, educational background?
Yes, I got a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from UMass Lowell.
Okay.
So, with civil engineering comes any kind of drainage and a lot of environmental pieces to that.
Mm-hmm, and just, you know, in a couple of sentences, and we appreciate very much that you're willing to volunteer, but just in a couple of sentences, besides your background, why do you feel, why did you want to volunteer for the Conservation Commission?
Um, I haven't really, you know, this is the first time that I've taken an interest in kind of helping out my community. I didn't really know how any of my experiences could really be beneficial. And I think that this is, you know, I've lived in Leominster now for about ten years and I'd like to, you know, get more involved with the city. So, I felt that this was a good avenue to at least start doing that and assist the city with their, their day-to-day business. And I think that my expertise, my experience and expertise can really bring something to the table for that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree because you have a unique background for it. So, I agree in that, agree with that. So, thank you very much. So, Nathan, like I said, we, you know, we're familiar with you. You've been before us in the past. So, can you just give us a little bit, just, you know, give us a little bit of an update on what you've been doing and what, you know, how you feel as though you can contribute to the Conservation Commission?
Yes, my background, as you guys already know, is like diving. And in terms of the Conservation Commission, I feel like I've worked on the hands-on side of it. Like, I've done like ecological surveys for like EPA and for like private companies that like are going to go ahead and build a project. And I feel like it adds some insight when it comes to that side of the industry, more like the hands-on and...
Right, because what you do is basically hands-on anyway, right? I mean, that's, you know, you're not researcher, you do the actual labor, right? The diving and that kind of thing.
Yes.
Now, so can you just give us again, we don't have your resume, so if you could remind us a little bit about your educational background and, you know, what you're doing now?
Um, I went to a commercial diving academy in Jacksonville, Florida.
Can you say that again? That didn't come, Nathan, can you say that again? That didn't come through, but...
Okay, I went to a school in Jacksonville, Florida, a commercial diving academy.
Yep. Yep.
And, uh, they, uh, trained us in like, commercial diving. Got some land.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Um, Counselor Frida, do you have any questions or comments for either Jeffrey Goine or Nathan?
No, as far as Jeffrey Goine, I'm, I'm with Ms. Frida. Um, we have a lot of noise on this. I'm not sure where it's coming from.
Yeah, I, I hear it too.
Very difficult to, to understand anyone.
Somebody, somebody have some feedback or TV or anything like that, or somebody have their TV on?
Yeah. Yeah, starting when Nathan starts talking, so it might be something he doesn't really hear that much, but it comes through very strongly. Okay, that's quieter.
Yeah, that's better. Um, okay, Jeffrey, um, just a, a quick question. Do you, are you working out of, um, the Worcester DOT?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's technically Shrewsbury because we're relocated there for a year, but yes, I'm out of the Worcester office.
Right, you're in this district. Um, do you, do you work with, uh...
Yes, uh, I spent, I, I spent five years, as I say, I spent five years in District Six out in Boston, but I'm, I'm in District Three now.
Okay, so you work with, uh, Mr. Davidson?
Ryan Davidson?
Yep.
Yeah.
No, yeah.
Wait, Ryan Davidson, the, uh, re- resident engineer? Yes, I've worked with him.
Um, oh, when you mentioned Central Street and you mentioned some of the projects in Lemnster, I know you've been involved with them. Um, your, your background certainly fits conservation. Conservation is a really important piece to, uh, city government, in my opinion. And I know, again, the rules are laid out and very important to follow those rules. But I think, I think it's one place where you really can't go in and learn. You've got to have some kind of a background. And, you know, I'm, I'm happy to hear that you have that. Um, my daughter's a graduate of University of Lowell and they have an incredible program, as far as I'm concerned, so, um, and she's spent many years on the Conservation Commission. So I'm, um, happy to, to support you. I, um, glad you're coming forward and, and want to take an interest in the city. So, um, with that, I'll, um, move on to Nathan. Um, Nathan, how, how do you, again, feel like you can contribute to conservation?
Um, like I said, I, um, I'm involved in like the labor side of it and, and, uh, I feel like I would be able to contribute and help, uh, like contractors understand like the, the rules.
So when you're, when you're saying the labor side of it, you're, you're in construction?
Yeah, so, um, it's, we do like underwater surveys for like EPA and, um, like private companies, um, for like water-based projects, for the most part.
Okay, so it's all, all relative to your, your swimming and diving then?
Yeah, that's correct.
My, okay. All right, I think I'm all set. Counselor Feckley?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Dombrowski, do you have any questions or comments for, uh, either gentleman or both?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions. I, I do want to thank them for volunteering. Um, there's a dire need for people to serve on that committee.
Mhm.
Uh, and that, that's a, that's a committee that does important work. And I'm glad we got a couple of quality guys to take on that commitment, so I just want to thank them for, for volunteering and I want to wish them well.
Okay, very good. Any other counselors have any questions or comments?
Counselor Angelini?
David Cormier?
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Angelini.
Well, Counselor Angelini was first, so please proceed.
Thank you, Counselor Feckley. Um, I would, I would like to echo the, the other counselor's, uh, gratitude for you stepping forward to serve on the commission. Um, it's a, uh, commission that's dear to my heart. I served at the pleasure of three mayors uh, when I was a younger man. May I suggest, gentlemen, that, um, the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions has an annual meeting, uh, symposiums and, and new laws and regulation changes. It's an entire day program. Uh, but it's very beneficial. I would strongly suggest that, uh, if you can make it, you do. And I wish you the, the best of luck as you will be the guardians of our regulated resources here in the city of Lemnster. So I wish you the best of luck. Thank you again for your, uh, volunteering.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Angelini. Uh, Counselor Cormier, did I hear you?
Yeah, it's, uh, Counselor David Cormier. I just wanted to, uh, you know, thank both of these gentlemen for, uh, stepping up to the plate and volunteering for such an important, uh, commission. Um, you know, when I first took over as the City Council about ten years or so ago, I never realized how many conservation-related issues I would be dealing with and helping people out with. And it, you know, it's very important work, both in the short term and the long term. The decisions that are made are very important. So, you know, I would just like to, um, you know, say to both of these gentlemen that, you know, whenever you're working on something, get as much information as you can and, and really, um, you know, it's, it's important to make good decisions because they have lasting effect on, you know, people involved, whether they be butters or, or, you know, the landowners themselves. Um, it's just very important work and, uh, I thank both gentlemen for volunteering to put the time and effort in that it takes, um, you know, to do the work of, of a city like this. So thank you very much to both of you.
Okay, any other counselors have any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate very much that you, uh, took, took part in our virtual interview process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Counselor Feckley. We're now going to conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone, or in this case, answer the call here, the telephone, and state their formal name and address along with the identifying, along with identifying the specific items or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there anybody on the line that wishes to address the council via the public forum? I'll ask for a second time. Is there any member of the public who has joined us that wishes to address the City Council via the public forum? The third and final time, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the City Council through the public forum? I will declare the public forum closed. We're now out of recess. We'll move to communications from the mayor, starting with C fifty-nine.
C fifty-nine, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the council adopt an order to authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city, to accept an easement from the owners of the property described below. A copy of the easement granted by the owner of the property is attached. This is in regards to one seventy Main Street in Lemnster and one seventy-four Main Street in Lemnster.
C fifty-nine is referred to the Chair of City Property, Counselor Angelini.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is first time on the agenda. Regular course, please.
Very well. Uh, moving on to orders, starting with C sixty.
C sixty, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of six hundred thousand dollars be made to the pension expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C sixty is referred to the Chairman of Finance, Counselor Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, uh, regular course.
Very well, C sixty is given regular course. Moving on to C sixty-one. Yes, yes, Counselor Frida?
Mr. President, if I could, um, I would strongly suggest that on C sixty and C sixty-one coming up, that before the next meeting, and if we're still doing, um, uh, virtual meetings, that we have, uh, the mayor and John Richards participate because six hundred thousand dollars on a stabilization right now is a lot of money. And we've got some major issues that we're going to be looking at, so I think we need to get some answers on this before we vote.
Yeah, we, we can, we can ask the, uh, the mayor and the comptroller to join our, uh, telephone conference if that's the way we're meeting the next time around, uh, to, uh, be available to answer any questions with respect to those, uh, communications.
Yeah, I think it's almost, it's almost imperative that we do that.
Yeah, I, um, I'm, I'm comfortable as to what the explanation is, uh, for this. This, of course, is only on for the first time this evening. Um, I have had a discussion with the comptroller, uh, in some depth about this, but, um, your point is well-taken. I'll ask the clerk to reach out to both the mayor and, uh, the comptroller to join our, uh, telephone conference at, at our next meeting. Um, I'd like to move on to see...
I have some comments too, so hopefully we can do it at the end of the meeting.
Um, comments? It, with, with, this is on for the first time, Counselor?
Right, I agree.
Yeah, all right. C sixty-one, please?
C sixty-one, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars be made to the pension expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the principal debt service expense account.
C sixty-one is referred to the Chairman of Finance, Counselor Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well. C sixty-one is given regular course, along with C sixty. The clerk will reach out to the mayor and comptroller to join us with respect to these two orders at our next meeting. C sixty-two.
C sixty-two, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars be made to the School Department Transportation expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding pay on going bus service costs.
C sixty-two is referred to the Chairman of Finance, Counselor Cormier.
Once again, Mr. President, uh, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you very much. C sixty-two is given regular course. Moving on to matter... Yes?
Mr. President?
Um, I think I'm hearing Counselor Frida?
Yep, um, I see...
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, I'll get to you next.
Yep.
Counselor Frida, go ahead.
Um, can we just, can we just get, um, um, an update to see if there's been any attempt to renegotiate that contract and with the buses aren't going anywhere? Um, I'm sure there's a reason for this, but, um, if we could get that information, that'd be, that'd be important.
Um, Counselor Cormier, would you be willing to, uh, reach out and, uh, have some background information before the next meeting?
Absolutely, Mr. President. That was actually, when I have this conversation with, uh, with the people involved in the city, that was actually going to be my question, is what we are, what we are bound to contractually and, uh, if, uh, if there's any, any savings to the city at this point, considering that we aren't transporting any students. So that, those are all questions that I had planned on asking as part of this communication, uh, anyway. Thank you.
Great, very well. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
You know, my, my question was, excuse me, along those same lines, um, what savings, if any, what kind of negotiations the School Department could do to reduce, you know, any balance on the, uh, transportation contract that we have? So, um, uh, Counselor Cormier, I think you've got it covered.
All right, very well. Good light, good minds think alike. Very good. Um, all right, matters before the City Council, starting off with a C eleven's the financial report. Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we began the fiscal year on July one, twenty nineteen, with nineteen million, eight hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, we currently, uh, provided that we do have C fifty-eight this evening. We will have spent four million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twelve cents, which will leave us with a balance of fifteen million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. And that is the financial report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Um, let's move on to finance, uh, starting with C fifty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, C dash fifty-eight, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of twelve thousand dollars be made to the Veterans Department expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding the replacement of two doors at the Veterans Center. I did have a conversation, uh, today with, um, Rick Votor, the, uh, Veterans Director. And he indicated to me both of these doors are located, um, at the Veterans Center, obviously, and they face Rockwell Pond. They are doors on the lower level of the, of the structure. And, uh, he said they probably date back, you know, to when the building was built, their original. And what needs to happen there is they need to do some jackhammering of the cement, uh, and whatnot to get these steel doors, um, you know, retrofitted and replaced to something, uh, uh, that's a little bit more, um, you know, user-friendly, uh, you know, for, for what they need to see them for. Um, so it's just basically, you know, giving, um, giving these doors a replacement and, and just keeping up with the building. And there is a whole description, uh, that was given here on the layout of the work, and it is on file if anybody from the public is interested. It is on file with the City Clerk's Office, um, if anybody, you know, needs to see all of the fine details here. Um, but after speaking with Rick Votor, um, I have no issues with what needs to be done. Um, and it would be my recommendation to grant C dash fifty-eight, and I would ask you, all members of my committee?
Yes, very well. Uh, Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I am in agreement.
And Counselor Angelini?
I certainly support the re- the replacement of these doors at the Veterans Center, so, yes.
Okay, so you have a unanimous recommendation, Counselor?
That is correct.
Very well. You have heard the, the recommendation of, of the Chair of Finance unanimously by his committee to grant C fifty-eight. Uh, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes.
Counselor Frida, um, I absolutely support this for the Veterans Department, um, but I question whether this is an emergency. Um, these are all things that would have been paid out of free cash, if we had free cash. And I think we really need to look carefully on how many things we're going to continue to take out of stabilization. Um, that's for a rainy day and, and it's going to be pouring. So I, I mean, I really think we need to look closely. And I, I would like to give a further time till we find out exactly how important it is that they be done now. But, um, I will go along with it, but I'm not going to support anything else that comes out of stabilization. Not until we get the numbers from the state.
Anybody else like to be heard?
Uh, Counselor Arndinger?
Yes.
Yeah, um, those doors, um, they're rusted, they're very difficult to open. I've used, uh, used them on several occasions at the Veterans Center. And they do have meetings down there and unfortunately, I think they could get jammed very easily. In case of an emergency, you may have some egress, uh, from the building, uh, prohibited. I would certainly, I think we should move forward on this.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Anybody else, any other Counselor wish to be heard? Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, this will be by roll call, starting with Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. The petition passes by a vote of nine to zero. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of twelve thousand dollars be appropriated to the Veterans Department expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization account. Move for the adoption of the order.
This will be by roll call as well. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. The order has been adopted. Moving on to legal affairs, C fifty-four. I'm going to excuse you from reading this petition, uh, Counselor, um, Dombroski. I'm gonna excuse you from reading this petition, uh, counsel, um, Dombrowski. This is the, uh, in summary form. This is the mayor's, uh, request to exempt the police chief and police captain from the auspices of the civil service law. Uh, I know this has been continued for a number of times, uh, and I don't believe it's ready for action tonight, so we're, we're not gonna be voting on it. I won't require you to read it, but I will, I will require you to give us a recommendation.
Uh, if I could do some quick committee work, um, I don't know if we wanna, uh, further time it and keep this on the agenda or table this for study, and we'll take it off the table once we're in a better position to, um, have public hearings and get recommendations from unions that are required to meet. Um, so I just ask, you know-
You want me to poll your committee?
-quick poll my committee, yeah. I, I think that is appropriate at this point.
All right, so I'll check, I'll check with the clerk, uh, counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
I'm fine with, um, tabling the petition. I think it makes sense.
Okay, couns- okay, counsel David Cormier?
I, I as well, um, am okay with tabling the posi- uh, the petition, uh, as of right now. I mean, with everything going on, it's probably gonna be a long while before they have a chance to meet and, 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 you know, come back to us with an answer. So, I mean, I'd say we're probably talking at least, you know, the end of May, early June. So, I, I'd say we just table it for now, I agree.
So, counsel Dombrowski, the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs is to table for study?
That's correct.
Okay, seems to make sense. It'll, there'll, there's some, net some of it'll prevent me from having to, uh, waive the reading of it every, every meeting. Um, any discussion?
Uh, uh, Mr. President, I agree with tabling it. Um, not only are we dealing internally with it in the city, but the, um, legislature is not able to vote on anything unless it's, um, unanimous by the entire body. So, they wouldn't be able to act on it if it was, if it was presented anyway. So, I agree with tabling it.
Very well. Any other comments before we vote? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. The recommendation is to table for study, C fifty-four, starting with counsel Afida.
Yay.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Feckley?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Aringer?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. C fifty, C fifty-four is tabled by, for, for study by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to thirty-seven dash twenty.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Petition thirty-seven dash twenty, the botanist, grant a special permit to operate a medical marijuana facility located at seventeen seventy-five Lock Drive. Uh, we have a public hearing scheduled for April twenty-seventh. Um, we did get some information from the planning board, uh, but I, I think it's more appropriate to read that during the public hearing. Uh, it's unlikely that April twenty-seventh is gonna go forward. I have spoken with the attorney for the petitioner. Um, they've agreed to work with us and grant us reasonable extension. Um, however, I, I believe they want to be kept on the agenda. Um, so my recommendation would be further time, and, uh, I would just ask that, uh, you poll my committee, and I will reach out to, uh, the attorney for the botanist, um, once the vote is taken, and just make sure that he's up to speed with everything.
Very well. Uh, counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, I agree with that.
And counsel David Cormier?
I also agree as well.
We, we should also note that, um, the governor's emergency declaration pushes back the constructive grant period to sixty days after the end of the per- uh, period of emergency declaration. So, I think, uh, counsel Dombrowski will find them probably very co- not that they haven't been already, but you'll find them cooperative with respect to a new date if we need it. Uh, very well, the, um, recommendation of legal affairs is to give thirty-seven dash twenty further time. Is there any, any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. President?
And counsel Angelini, you are going to abstain, correct?
Yes, that is correct, thank you.
Yeah, your abstention is noted. Does he hear someone else, uh, uh, wanna be recognized? Counsel Afida?
Yeah, um, I'm just curious as to why we're giving this further time and not tabling it. I don't think April twenty-seventh's gonna go either, and, and I, I, I know that the constructive permit's on an issue at this point, so I think, um, I, I would think tabling it would make more sense, but, um-
All right, well, we have a, we have a, we have a recommendation from the committee, uh, before us.
I agree, but I can, I can, I can also give my opinion in this discussion.
Of, of course you can, of course you can.
So, so I, you know, I, I know we're gonna agree with what's further than, but, um-
All right, well, your, your opinion is so, your opinion is noted. Does anybody else have anything further?
Uh, just, Mr. President, um, John Dombrowski?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I would just note that, um, you know, if you read the planning board communication, there's, there's gonna be information coming in. We're also waiting for other, um, recommendations. So, gi- just given the nature of the project, um, I, I just think choosing between the two, um, I would prefer further time just to make sure we stay on top of this. I'm unlike prior communication. I'm sorry, I'm like prior- We, um-
I think you'd also, I'm sorry, counsel.
I just, I'm like the prior communication where nothing really has happened at all. This one, you know, the wheels are still moving.
And, and I think you'd note that the, uh, petitioner has been cooperative with us with respect to the constructive grant rules.
Yeah, absolutely, very cooperative.
All right, is any other counsel wish to, yes, counsel Afida?
Uh, yeah, I just think it's important that, once we get to a point of really making a decision, that this needs, we need to be back there, 'cause this, a public hearing is something that's important, needs to be where people can see what we're saying and have the opportunity to participate.
We'll cross that, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. We're not there yet. Um, anything further? All right, this will be by roll call. Recommendation of legal affairs is to give thirty-seven dash twenty further time, starting with counsel Afida.
Yay.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counsel, um, Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Feckley?
Yay.
Counsel Aringer?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And the chair will report, will be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero. Counsel Angelini abstaining. Thirty-seven dash twenty is given further time. Moving on to thirty-eight dash twenty, uh, once again, I will waive, uh, the requirement of reading thirty-eight dash twenty. In summary fashion, these are technical updates to the, uh, flood, uh, zone, um, mapping, uh, and requirements of our ordinance. Uh, and I will turn this over to the, uh, chair of legal affairs.
Uh, thank you, yes, they are technical requirements. Unfortunately, um, the planning board needs to have a public hearing on this matter, um, before we can act. They have been unable to have a public hearing. Um, so, I, I would, uh, poll my committee whether they wanna go with, um, further time or table this for study. Um, I, I think most likely this is something that will be granted, but, um, the protocol is we do have to have a planning board hearing, um, be- and a recommendation from them before we can go to work.
Well, hopefully, they'll, they will take this up at their next, uh, their next meeting.
Well, if that's the case, then my recommendation would be further time.
Okay, I'll check with members of your committee. Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I'm fine with further time.
Counsel David Cormier?
Further time is fine with me as well.
Okay, unanimous recommendation on thirty-eight dash twenty is further time. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, counsel Afida?
Yay.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Feckley?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Aringer?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. Thirty-eight dash twenty is given further time by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to fifty-three dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition fifty-three dash twenty, Jill A. Natola. Petition for acceptance of Sheldon Hill Drive and Pheasant Run Circle. Um, I believe we are waiting for the planning board's recommendation on this. Um, the DPW, um, has signed off on this. Um, I myself looked at it, everything looks, looks good to me. Um, the only thing we're awaiting is the planning board's recommendation. So, I would ask for further time, and hopefully, we'll have that at the next meeting, and we can push fifty-three twenty through.
That sounds good. All right, I'd like for me to check with your committee members.
I appreciate that.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I'm fine with further time, thank you.
Counsel David Cormier?
I concur with further time.
All right, so unanimous recommendation of legal affairs is to give fifty-three dash twenty further time. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, counsel Afida?
Yay.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Feckley?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Aringer?
Yay.
Counsel David, uh, Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. Fifty-three dash twenty is given further time by a nine to zero vote. Moving on to fifty-four dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition fifty-four dash twenty, Jill A. Natola. Petition for acceptance of sewer easements at Brooks Pond. Uh, on this particular, um, th- these are easements necessary for the, for the pump station down there. Uh, a lot of people are waiting for this to happen. The planning board issued a recommendation approving this. The DPW has likewise approved it. My recommendation would be to grant petition fifty-four dash twenty, and I would ask you to poll my committee.
Sure. Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Counsel David Cormier?
I agree, I am, uh, very much in favor of this.
Um, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of finance to grant, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, uh-
Yes, counsel Afida? Yes.
Um, I, I'm supportive of this as well. I go back to day one with this project, and, um, I know how the sewer easements were, um, how they came to be, and the amount of people that were able to hook up to this, and that you need to accept the pump station. And I know it's been closely worked with the DPW all the way through on this, so, um, I'm comfortable with it as well.
Very good. Anybody else, uh, want to, uh, comment? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, counsel Afida?
Yay.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Feckley?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Aringer?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, fifty-four twenty, uh, passes by a unanimous vote of nine to zero. Moving on to fifty-five dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition fifty-five dash twenty, Officer Julio Ramos. Request to amend chapter thirteen of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. The order deemed by the city council of the city of Lomester is follows. Chapter thirteen, section thirteen dash thirty-four of the revised ordinances entitled No Parking on Certain Streets is hereby amended by inserting the following text. No parking on research drive, both sides, from a point beginning one thousand one hundred sixty-three feet, easterly from the intersection with Central Street, through the cul-de-sac, and back westerly to the one thousand one hundred sixty-three foot starting point. Uh, we did get a couple of, uh, letters. One from the, uh, Officer Julio Ramos petitioning this matter. Uh, this letter reads, "I am requesting that a previous petition that was submitted and accepted by the city council be rescinded slash amended." It's previously read, "No parking on research drive from a point beginning at one thousand one hundred sixty-three feet from said intersection with Central Street, and which to end at a point one thousand eight hundred seventy-five feet from said intersection. Motorists are continuing to park past the no parking area that was established by the recent petition. The motorists are parking into the cul-de-sac, which is affecting the local business process cooling." Uh, so, there's a need to, uh, essentially make this parking restriction a little stricter. We also received a letter from, um, Lieutenant Aaron Kennedy, uh, who is the, uh, traffic agent with the Lomester Police Department, and he indicates that both he and the acting chief, um, are also in favor of this petition. Uh, so, given those circumstances, my recommendation is to grant petition fifty-five dash twenty, and I would ask you to poll my committee.
Okay, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll take that up. We are going to need to, um, schedule this for a public hearing as well, which we'll do afterward?
Oh, we are? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, okay.
Do you wanna schedule, do you wanna schedule that first?
Yeah, um- Uh, I'd ask the clerk, um, what's, what looks good.
I would recommend April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, at six fifty-three PM.
So, the next meeting?
Yes.
At what time?
Six fifty-three PM.
Okay.
Okay, so we can take a vote on establishing that hearing date. I'll check with your committee. Uh, counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I'm fine with that hearing date.
Counsel Cormier?
I also agree.
So, the unanimous recommendation of, uh, legal affairs is to set a hearing on fifty-five dash twenty on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, at six fifty-three PM. Any discussion? Hearing none, counsel Afida?
Yay.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Feckley?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Aringer?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. Fifty-five dash twenty is set for a public hearing on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, six fifty-three PM. Moving on to ways and means. Counsel Feckley, start with our appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we have a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Kristen Howlett to the license commission, term to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. Um, we had Ms. Howlett, um, on a virtual interview this evening. Um, she has been attending license commission meetings. She, um, has been, um, mentored by, um, a license commission member, Lynn Gardett, and she feels as though she is up to the task of, um, doing this very, you know, arduous and exacting work. She has background in, uh, legal work, and also, of course, we all know that she served, um, on the school committee for many, many years. So, my recommendation would be that we confirm the appointment of Kristen Howlett to this very important, um, uh, to this very appoint- important appointment. And I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counsel Afida?
I agree.
And Counselor Dombrowski?
I agree.
You've heard the CM's recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the appointment of Kristen Howlett to the License Commission. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call vote. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. The appointment of Kristen Howlett has been confirmed by a unanimous nine to zero vote. Moving on to the appointment of Jeffrey Goine. Counselor Feckley?
Thank you, um, Mr. President. Measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Jeffrey Goine to Conservation Commission, term to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we also had Mr. Goine, um, for a virtual interview. Uh, Mr. Goine has a B.S. in civ- civil engineering. He's currently working for the Department of Transportation out of the Worcester office. Uh, he has experience, uh, with, uh, plans and drainage and site work. Um, he has lived in Leominster for the past ten years. Uh, one of the, um, plans that has come before him was our own Twin City Trail. Uh, he feels as though he wants to give back to the community, and I feel as though he is more than qualified to do so. So, my recommendation would be to confirm the appointment of Jeffrey Goine, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Frida?
I agree.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I agree.
You've heard the CM's recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to approve the appointment of Jeffrey Goine to the Conservation Commission. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by unanimous vote of nine to zero. Jeffrey Goine's appointment to the Conservation Commission is approved. Moving on to the appointment of Nathan Fontaine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Nathan Fontaine to Conservation Commission, term to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, we again had, uh, Mr. Fontaine, um, before us in a virtual interview. Um, we are familiar with Mr. Fontaine as we have already interviewed him and, um, appointed him to the OEM Divers Unit. Um, he, uh, works more hands-on with ethological surveys underwater, of all things. Um, he is an experienced licensed diver. Um, he's very familiar with the EPA rules and regulations and especially on the labor side of things, which I think would make him a unique member of the Conservation Commission. So, my recommendation would be to confirm the appointment of Nathan Fontaine to the Conservation Commission. I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Frida?
I agree.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I agree.
The CM's recommendation of Ways and Means is to approve the appointment of Nathan Fontaine. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by unanimous vote of nine to zero. Nathan Fontaine's appointment to the Conservation Commission has been confirmed. Moving on to fifty-six dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fifty-six dash twenty. Everything Cutie Inc. renewed the second-hand dealer's license for cuties located at thirty-seven Mechanic Street, second floor, and if there's no objection, we can do fifty-twenty, fifty-seven twenty as well. Um, Everything Cutie- Everything Cutie Inc. renewed the second-hand dealer's license for cutie patooties located at ten twenty-one Central Street. Um, we do have, um, the recommendations, uh, from the Treasurers Office and the Police Department, and they are both positive, so my recommendation would be that we renew the licenses for both, uh, fifty-seven twenty and- sorry, I lost my place here.
Fifty-six dash twenty.
Fifty-six twenty and fifty-seven twenty, and I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Okay, so, Counselor Frida?
Yay, I agree.
And Co- Counselor Dombrowski?
I agree.
As painful as it is, I think we need to take these as separate votes, however.
That's fine.
Um, so, we'll start with fifty-six twenty. The unanimous- the recommendation of Ways and Means is unanimous to grant fifty-six dash twenty. Any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recor- uh, recorded as yay. Fifty-six dash twenty is passed by a vote of nine to zero. Fifty-seven dash twenty, uh, is also unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means to grant. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor, uh, Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor, uh, Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. Fifty-six, uh, fifty-seven dash twenty's been granted by unanimous vote of nine to zero. Fifty-eight dash twenty.
Yes, fifty-eight dash twenty. Christopher Rebar requests a transient vendor's license for the sale of flowers and plants. Um, I have been informed by Assistant City Clerk that we did receive a positive recommendation from the Police Department and that we do not require one from the Treasury and Collectives as Mr. Rebar does not own property in Leominster. So, um, my recommendation would be that, um, we, uh, we approve the transient vendor's license, uh, for Christopher Rebar, and I should poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Frida?
Uh, I agree. This gentleman's been doing this for a long time.
Yeah.
Uh, over twenty years. Uh, the only thing I would suggest is that he be given notice that the physical distance would be- I mean, on Mother's Day, he's had a lot of people in one place, so, whether that's the case now with everything going on, but I think he needs to be, be, uh, receptive to keeping a safe distance.
A- a- as well as his customers. Um...
Yeah.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I agree.
Okay. The unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means is to grant fifty-eight dash twenty. Is there any further discussions? Hearing none. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
And Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. Fifty-eight dash twenty has been granted by unanimous vote of nine to zero. We have no new business, we have no old business. Do we have any community calendar?
Uh, do we have any old business? To discuss old business?
Uh, if- there's no old business on the agenda, Counselor Frida.
Okay, so we can't go back like we usually do to something on the agenda tonight?
Something that's on this agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, you- you can discuss something that's on this agenda, yes.
Right, okay, so I can go back to finance?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I just wanted to, um, update the- the council. I've had seven different meetings, um, three of them.
Can you- can you- can you- can you be more specific on what on finance you're addressing?
Uh, either one. On, uh, let's go anything with the stabilization account withdrawal.
All right, so you want- this is- this is to the stabilization account?
Yeah.
Okay, proceed.
Uh, I've had seven different meetings, uh, three of them that have been moderated by the- by the Lieutenant Governor, um, this is Department of Revenue, Public Safety, uh, General Counsel, up- uh, updating us on some of the major issues they're gonna be facing. Um, I'd like to see if the, uh, Finance Chair has any information regarding receipts that have come in, if there's any discussion with David LaPlante on whether we're- we're low on our receipts, which I'm assuming we probably are, um, and free cash. I mean, I know I ask it every week, but, you know, it's the middle of last week, nothing has been filed with the state yet for free cash, so...
All right, well, ten- our quarterly- our quarterly real estate tax bills are due on, uh, May the first. I'm sure we all have an interest in- in what our collectibility will be, um, and I'm very confident that the Chair of Finance would be willing to talk to the Treasurer about that, um, and, uh, you know the drill with respect to, uh, free cash. Uh, is there anything else?
This- this isn't a drill anymore. This is serious stuff. Everything we're taking out is stabilization.
Counselor, co- Counselor, you ask this every meeting. Co- Counselor, I have the floor. Counselor, I have the floor right now. You ask this every meeting. And you know and I know...
That's right. If this Council doesn't care about where our finances are, that's a problem.
Counselor, Counselor, you're gonna permit me to speak, or I'm not gonna permit you to speak. You follow me?
I'm done.
You follow me?
I'm done.
You are as- you ha- you have just as much ability to contact the comptroller as the Finance Chair or anybody else on the Council and ask your questions directly, or the mayor relative to free cash, and you are more than welcome to do that. I understand your concerns. I'm sure the Finance Chair understands your concerns. You've been on the Council for a long time. We all know how this works. So, you've expressed yourself and we'll leave it at that.
And now's the time- and this is the time that we ought to be really looking at this as a council, and we're not.